Looks like we have everyone but Ron, right? So far?
Hi Patty.
Hello Ronnie.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Oh, I've just been out working in my yard.
Been trying to save the last of my tomatoes from my squirrel.
I don't even, I planted them when I first moved here and they just, they even crawl through the cages to get to them.
I'm losing this battle.
I was gonna say, don't get Denise started on the squirrels.
I have a lot of bad words for squirrels. I wouldn't mind if they picked one tomato and ate one tomato, but to take bites out of every single one just defies logic.
I guess the good part of that is you can feed that to the raccoons and that keeps them out of the rest of your tomatoes. At least that's what I do.
I had a raccoon climbing on my, up my gutter two nights ago. In the middle of the night, I thought it was somebody trying to break in.
Come in there.
Good evening and welcome to Mount Clemens City Commission Meeting for Monday, August 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 3, Roll Call, please.
Campbell.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Goodenough.
Here.
Hammond.
Yeah.
Crabb.
Here.
Mensor.
There.
Voorhees.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Voorhees.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Menser, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Could I have a roll call, please?
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crabb.
Yes.
Mensor.
Yes.
Agenda Item 4, Announcements, Acknowledgements, Communications, and Reports. Commissioner, I'm sorry, City Manager Johnson, do you have anything to add for department reports?
No, I don't. The reports are included as they are at the second meeting of every month.
Do we have any questions by commissioners on the department, department reports? Okay, hearing none, we will move to adopt the agenda, please. Could I have a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
We're asking to add an item to the agenda.
Line number C, request addition to agenda, emergency sewer repair on Dickinson Street.
Do I have a second, please?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Hammond, supported by Commissioner Fournier. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will, a roll call, please. A roll call, please. Am I, am I?
Lisa muted.
Um, City Manager Johnson, could maybe you do a roll call and then we can, can we do it that way?
I can, I can do it. It won't be in the normal order, so I'm gonna just read it off my screen.
Wait, she's back.
I'm back, sorry. Sorry, I keep cutting out.
That's all right.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crabb.
Yes.
Mensor.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Excellent. Moving on to, uh, sorry, uh, public participation, this is the.
No, you gotta, did you adopt the agenda yet? You made a motion to add the item. There should be a motion now to adopt the agenda.
Okay.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Um, Commissioner Hammond, I'm sorry, is amended?
As amended.
Okay, Commissioner Hammond, and do I have a support, please?
Support.
Was that Commissioner Fournier?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Um, roll, please. That'll love technology.
I'll do the roll call.
You can't do the roll call.
Well, I can start reading.
Okay.
I'm not sure where Lisa is. Uh, Crabb.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Mensor.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll move to public participation. At this time of the meeting, we ask for anyone who would like to address the commission to please give us their first name. To address mission, we ask that you give us your full name and your address and abide by our rule. We will take a list of names now and then we'll call on you individually to try to keep the Zoom, to keep order in the Zoom meeting. Is there anyone on the call right now that would like to participate? Hearing none, we will move on to Agenda Item 7, Administrative Responses to Issues or Questions Raised During Previous Meetings. City Manager Johnson?
There was nothing raised during public comment at the previous meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Agenda Item 8, Approval of Minutes. I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the special minutes, or the special meeting minutes of July 24th and August 7th, 2020, and the regular commission meeting of August 3rd, 2020.
Moved by Commissioner Menser, do I have a support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, please, uh, uh, roll call, please.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crabb.
Yes.
Mensor.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Moving, General Business, 9A, Ordinance Amendment to Prohibit Feeding Waterfowl. Um, is there anyone who'd like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of amendment to 35.200 at set and set September 8th, 2020, as the date for the second reading and adoption.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Do I have a support?
Support.
Thank you. Uh, City Manager Johnson?
I don't think I have to convince anybody that we have a major problem with geese and ducks on Clemens. Anyone that's been anywhere near the docks is, is well aware of that. The photograph shows the docks on the far side of the river. It's taken on the day that I wrote this report, uh, August 11th. Some places it's a good inch thick. The accumulation of droppings from, from, it's mostly geese, but ducks too, is far more than just a cosmetic problem. It's a significant public health problem. Bacteria, viruses, and parasites are present in droppings and they can cause disease in humans. Research that I've done on this in the last few days, it was actually kind of jaw dropping. An adult goose can leave two pounds or more of droppings per day. They go approximately every 12 minutes. The riverfront between the Crocker Bridge and the Dickinson Bridge often has 50 or 100 birds or more present. I was at Shady Side probably Friday of last week and there were about 100 birds in one area there. A lot of this is just because we have what's very attractive for them. They're, they're primarily grass eaters and we have lots of grass very near water. But it's exacerbated by the number of misguided but well-meaning humans who feed them. I see it looking out my window every day. I'll see somebody feeding the geese. In fact, the geese are so, so tame, they will come up and take food out of, out of a person's hand. While their natural diet is, is grass, they're very fond of bread, potato chips, Doritos, and other types of snack chips that I've seen people giving them, and a number of other things as well. When you see a really large concentration in a very small area, it's almost always because it's a human offering some type of food. We do not currently prohibit feeding geese and their ducks, but we do prohibit feeding pigeons, gulls, and doves, but only in the CBD. I'm suggesting that we amend 35-200, it's actually 35-201 through 35-203 of the Mount Clement City Code by adding waterfall to the prohibited foul and removing central business districts, so the prohibition is in effect everywhere in the city. The latter change is necessary because the goose and duck problem is mostly at locations outside the CBD. A red line version of the proposed ordinance follows and recommended motion has already been offered.
Okay.
Let me add that this is not gonna solve the problem all by itself. There's a number of other steps that we need to take. Things that are recommended are to put a barrier of some sort between the water and the grass. And one is to simply quit mowing the grass for a strip of about six feet near the river, let it get high. Another alternative would put in shrubbery or low fencing, as, as many of the residents do. I've also heard of putting in just a low piece of rope on, on short stakes or fishing line. I'd be concerned about creating a tripping hazard with that one. Another option is to spray the grass. And the sprays that they use are not toxic. They're basically just designed to make the grass distasteful. One of the most popular ones is an artificial grape flavoring. I suspect it probably makes the grass a little bit sticky too. So I've used something like that before, was based on making the trees sticky and making it uncomfortable for birds. Other things that are done are noise. One of the more popular ones is what's called a propane cannon that makes a booming sound periodically. Problem with that is it's gonna bother everybody else. Some places use recorded predator sounds, some places use decoys. The problem with those types of things is they usually work for a short period of time and then the geese figure it out. The thing that is pretty much universally stated to be the most effective is to use dogs. There are people who raise border collies and actually provide a service of bringing their, their border collies out to, to round up the geese. They don't harm them, but they irritate them and they go away after that. But for the moment, the, the recommended motion is, is to work on people feeding them.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I would like to say, um, Doc, City Manager, and this is research to look for different options to, um, try to alleviate the geese. So I appreciate him coming up with the different options of things that we could do.
I agree. Yeah, I think it's, 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 uh, quite nasty down there and so it's gonna deter anyone that wants to just go down and enjoy those docks. So I agree and appreciate the recommendation.
I wanted to add, oh, it's like a silly thing, but, um, you know, amending an ordinance about the geese and things, I thought, you know, we, we know that this is an issue of keeping people from coming down, you know, the conditions that our docks are in. We know it's a, an issue why we're not getting as many boaters as we once did. And so I am appreciative also of, you know, the efforts to at least address the issue. And I think it looks right at our strategic plan in terms of, you know, knowing that we need to market our downtown.
The, the walkway between the, the Crocker Bridge and, and the park, MacArthur Park, could be a very, very nice walk if, if we got that, that and a couple of other issues along the way cleaned up. Saw something that was done in Lansing where they created, in what they called an art walk. I think it was what they called it along the river. That's something that we might be able to do.
Yeah. Anyone else with any questions or comments? Hearing none, we will call the roll, please.
I guess that's me again. Fournier.
Yes.
Crabb.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mensor.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Gen, Agenda Item 9B, Approval of Purchases and Payments of Invoices.
Move to approve purchase and payment of invoices as presented.
Moved, moved by Commissioner Fournier, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Crabb.
Yes.
Mensor.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Goodenough.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Excellent. Agenda Item 9C, Requested Addition to Agenda, Emergency Sewer Repair on Dickinson Street. Entertain a motion? I'll entertain a motion? Can you guys hear me or am I?
Oh, now I can.
Okay, sorry, I'll entertain a motion for the Agenda Item 9C.
Uh, move to approve the Palmer Enterprises, Inc., to repair the underground infrastructure on Dickinson Street for about not to exceed $541,392.20.
Moved by Commissioner, sorry. Is that Commissioner Hammond?
Support.
Okay, Commissioner, support by Commissioner Hammond. City Manager Johnson?
I'm gonna let Jeff speak to this one. This is his project.
So as you're aware, the city received 1.4 million dollars to rehabilitate Dickinson Street. Last February, right before the COVID, we did some investigation and found that there was some sewer that was in very poor condition. We had our force account contractor working on this. However, the, the COVID shutdown became necessary, creating it so that he could not complete this task prior to the, the road construction beginning. So we had reached out to a, a couple other contractors to find out if anyone could get this done for us. Paymar Enterprises offered the attached quote and we would like to move forward and get them started repairing these sewer, the underground infrastructure, which is the sewer main, lateral lines, as well as some manholes throughout Dickinson from Grashit to Avery. So that we, we're not tearing up brand new concrete to make these repairs after the road construction project.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments for Assistant City Manager Wood?
Just to understand, this is Commissioner Fournier, just to understand, this was in the budget for this year or is this additional?
In the, it was not in the three-month budget. We originally were, were working with our force account contractor with the previous fiscal, in the previous fiscal year, as well as some funding in this fiscal year. But obviously, again, with the, the COVID shutdowns and so on, the contractor was not able to get that completed.
So is it going to cost us more because of this or is it just working out, it just took us longer?
It, it's not, it's not costing more per se. And it's not longer. We're just in a hurry to get it done as the road project's gonna start here in the middle of September and this work needs to be done prior to.
Okay, it's just replacing a contractor then, really?
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And the, and the money, uh, the account that the money will come out of is our enterprise funds, which is our water bill.
The sewer fund.
Yeah, correct. That's a sewer fund. And I did have a conversation with Cliff this morning and there is plenty of cash on hand in that fan, in that fund to cover this expense.
Okay. Um, does anyone have any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mensor.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Crabb.
Yes. Agenda Item 10, we do not. Commissioner, sorry, City Manager Johnson, nothing on the consent agenda, correct?
Uh, no, no ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, City Managers Report.
Thank you. Executive orders, the governor signed 2021-65, which extends the state of emergency through September 4th. That means our authority to hold public meetings remotely is automatically extended through that date plus an additional 28 days, which would be October 2nd. She also signed Executive Order 2020-166, which offers protections to workers who choose to stay at home when they or their close contacts are sick. She's also signed a few other ones in the last week, which really do not apply directly to the city. Sidewalk program. We will be moving to District 3 with a sidewalk program. District 3 is also known as the River Acres Neighborhood. This work's expected to begin once the road repair work has been completed in the middle of September. There are approximately 40,000 linear feet of sidewalk in this district and it's anticipated 20 to 30% or eight to 12,000 square feet, I'm sorry, linear feet, is in need of replacement during this year's program. I would also note, it's not written here, Jeff says that if the commission wanted to budget more money for this, for what's available for the city to pay for upfront costs, that we could add more area to the program. Electronic newsletter, I just wanted to be, let you be aware that Patrick and Nicole are working on a new electronic newsletter. Shady Side Park. EPS recently graded the sand and installed a net, so we have a functional volleyball court at Shady Side Park. Volleyballs and other sports equipment will be available through the Sportport Lending Program at the library starting September 8th. And possibly at other sites, not too long after that, there might actually even end up being a mobile version of Sportport. The two other sites where it was intended to go are, are mostly closed to the public. The Karn Center, which was at one time known as the Jermaine Jackson Center, is completely closed right now. And the city's recreation center on Grashit is closed most of the time right now. Cherry Street Mall, the benches near the stage have been removed from Cherry Street Mall. We also received a much lower cost proposal for removing the tables and benches, including their foundations. Now I'm talking about the tables and benches towards the back part of the mall. And in this case would be replacing the foundations with soil where grass or other plants can be planted. We're gonna have this before the DDA at their next meeting. Strategic planning, the second meeting was held on Friday, August 7th. We will be presenting the strategic plan to the commission for approval at the September 7th meeting. And firefighter hiring, 81 candidates passed the written exam, 22 participated oral boards and six passed the oral boards. Mount Clemens Civil Service Commission is scheduled to meet on August 20th to certify a hiring list. The sixth final list will be brought back for final interview with all three captains before offers are made. And then again, we got our notification systems up and operational. If you just click, we're, we're shown here. You can get to the signup page and we've got the schedule of upcoming commission meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for City Manager Johnson?
Uh, this is Commissioner Fournier, yes I do. On the sidewalk program. Uh, this is Commissioner Fournier. Yes, I do. On the sidewalk program, what happened to finishing District Two?
Mr. Wood.
Uh, District District Two was completed last year.
Entire district and one?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. So if we want to discuss this at the next meeting, then we should, um, talk to, uh, City Manager Johnson. I will do that.
If you want to put something specific on the agenda, any two commissioners can do that. If you just want a more involved report, uh, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
And and just so you know, the way that this program is designed, regardless, the the way that it was set up and approved, every year it moved from one district to the next district with the amount of money that we had, regardless of whether it was able to be completed in its entirety or not.
I thought that, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Wood, I thought last year we spent some of the at least, I know we spent an additional time in Seminole Hills because we hadn't completed part of it. So I wonder, I'm just confused by that.
So so District District One, there was a, uh, section that, um, was not completed, mainly along Harrington. District Two was also a portion of Seminole Hills, the Seminole Hills neighborhood. So we with with the Harrington Street project, we we finished sidewalks as part of that road project and then completed, um, District Two last year.
Okay, so if we want to discuss this further, then we will we need to, uh, speak with Mr. Johnson. Is everyone good with that?
Yes. I'm good with it.
Okay, excellent. Um, this is the portion of the meeting for public participation. If you would like to get in line to speak directly to the commission, we ask for your first name. If you, um, and then when we call on you, we will ask for your first name, last name, and your address, and we ask that you abide by our two minute rule. Do we have anyone on the call who would like to get in line? Seeing or hearing none, we move on to Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Campbell.
I want to, uh, welcome Commissioner Goodenough to the commission. I look forward to working with her. With that election, I want to thank the City Clerk Borges and Assistant Martin for the election that was flawless. And based off of that, we're going to be in good hands come November. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you. I also like to welcome Commissioner Goodenough, and I'm looking forward to working with you. And for, um, Commissioner Voorhees, I will let everyone know to continue to complete your census if you haven't already and make sure that's completed and submitted. That's all I have for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Uh, Commissioner Fournier.
Yes, welcome, Commissioner Goodenough. I really do look forward to working with you and having you as part of this team. You know, the reason, going on to another topic, the reason I get so riled up or upset about the sidewalks, and I get teased about it a lot, but people get hurt out there. And yes, there is a sidewalk in my neighborhood that I have given complaints to our, um, our community department that where I have watched one person after another fall. If you're in a cart for handicapped, you have to ride on the road because you cannot ride down the sidewalk. You can't take those changes in in the in the pavement. If you're pushing a stroller, you can't push, you gotta stop, pull it up and go over it. The person that fell last week that I saw bruised up both of her hands and her knees badly. This spot, this particular spot, I have watched many people fall on. We have to get these things fixed. It's not about aesthetics, it's about safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fournier. Uh, Commissioner Mensah.
First, I'd like to say congratulations to Dave Atkins from the Street Department on his retirement after twenty years of service as our lead mechanic. Enjoy your retirement, Mr. Atkins. I'd like to congratulate Captain Shipman, who just received a U.S. Department of Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the in the amount of forty seven thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and fifty cents. This grant will be used to secure an exhaust relief system for the trucks as they're idling in the bay. I'd also like to extend my condolences to, um, Commissioner Voorhees's father-in-law Gerald Tuscany. Gerald Tuscany, uh, passed. He was a lifelong resident, eighty-four years of Mount Clemens. He was a U.S. Navy veteran who served on submarines, most notably the USS Good Goodjin. And he also was a member of the Mount Clemens Volunteer Firefighters for over twenty-five years. And he followed in the footsteps of his father and his grandfather, who were also volunteer firefighters. And he was a proud, very proud member of the Mount Clemens Old Crowd. So rest in peace, Mr. Tuscany. And thank you for your service to the city. And, uh, welcome aboard, Wanda. It's going to be a rocky one.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Goodenough.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you first and foremost to Lisa for all of my annoying calls. I appreciate all your help for the campaign and I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Um, I just have a few things. Um, I too would like, of course, to welcome Wanda, uh, Commissioner Wanda Goodenough to the team. We're so excited to finally have a sixth member of the commission and really look forward to you, all of all of that you have to offer Mount Clemens and the commission. I'd like to thank all the election workers as well. Um, I know that, um, led by, uh, City Clerk, uh, Borges and, um, Assistant City Clerk Kathy Martin. Everyone did such a great job. And, um, I know of a lot of other cities who really struggled with all of the absentee ballots. And I think our team did a fantastic job and we were one of the first ones in. So well done, ladies. Thank you so much for your leadership on that. I would like to congratulate the Mount Clemens Public Library on their new millage, and I look forward to working with them and and, um, and excited about all the changes that they are going to have in the next few years. So I think that's going to be such a such an asset to the city. I want to thank the DPW for removing the old benches in the Cherry Street Mall. I look forward to the phase one of the, um, really the revitalizing of Cherry Street Mall. And I would like to, oh, more tables and chairs just arrived also for, um, the downtown area. So I'd like to thank the DDA for coordinating and purchasing them in especially in this challenging time, because one would think that you could buy tables and chairs at any store or on Amazon. But after, I think, five or six different orders being, uh, canceled and backordered and it was, uh, definitely a really interesting ride trying to get those tables and chairs here. So, please, everyone, take the time to go out in downtown and enjoy, uh, sitting and and having a meal, um, in downtown. Um, I'd like to thank everyone for their work, um, on the strategic plan. We had so many people, um, involved in that, our staff, all the commissioners. Um, we had, uh, residents who show who were able to attend the first session. So I would really like to thank everyone for their, um, for their input and really their thoughtfulness, um, to try to move Mount Clemens forward. And it was a really exciting, I think it's a really exciting plan. And I look forward to now connecting that plan with the work that we do every day. So, um, thank you again, everybody, for putting in so much effort with that. Um, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell.
Or.
Support by Commissioner Fournier. And roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Crap.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night and be safe. Good night.
Good night. Enjoy your vacation.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Be safe.